All right, I will call the regular Board meeting of Education, which was duly noted on May 9th, 2025, through the postings and notifications of the press in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.84. And I would like to begin by, with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Johnson, would you please introduce our guest tonight?
Absolutely, it is my distinct pleasure and honor to introduce Dana Simmons to everyone. She is principal at Adams Elementary School, and she has been for the past eight years. Before coming to Adams, she served as a third grade teacher and academic learning coach. Dana and her husband Ben have two children who have grown up in the Janesville School District. One recently graduated, and she also has a son who is a sophomore at Parker High School. Who do you have with you today?
Thank you, Susan. I have three amazing fifth graders with me today, all who have started with us in kindergarten all the way through fifth grade. We're very proud of all of you. I have Sienna Bell. I also have with me Tessa Hopkins and Charlotte Farah, and both Charlotte and Tessa have served many years on our Student Council as well. So I will turn it over to the three of them to lead us in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, tonight we have a reorganization, so I have the duty of walking through the agenda until the Board elects a president. So the first order of business is to adopt the May 13th, 2025 Board of Education Agenda, to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
A motion of second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes six, zero. During the reorganization of the Board, I will move forward with the reorganization until the Board elects a president, and then at that time I will turn over the meeting to the President. And so our first task here is to take nominations for the Office of President. So I will call three times specifically. So I have a call for a nomination for President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Kevin Murray.
Okay, are there any other further nominations for the President of the Board of Education? Last time, any further nominations for President of the Board of Education? All right, hearing none, nominations are closed, and we should take a vote? Yes, all right, all those in favor of the election of Mr. Kevin Murray as President of the Board of Education? Voice vote. All those in favor of Kevin Murray as President of the Board of Education?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? All right, motion passes six, zero. I declare Commissioner Kevin Murray as the President of the Board of Education, and I will turn the gavel to him.
Call for nomination for Vice President of the Board of Education.
I nominate Lisa Herta.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor of election of Lisa Herta as Vice President of the Board of Education? All those in favor, vote yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. What in the heck is going on? Congratulations, Lisa.
You okay? You want me to do the last one?
Good grief. All right, call for nominations for Clerk of the Board of Education.
I will nominate Liz Paul.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All in favor of Elizabeth Paul as Clerk of the Board of Educations?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, I declare Elizabeth Paul as the Clerk of Board of Education.
And nothing.
Yes, sir. And how about nominations for Treasurer of the Board of Education?
I nominate Greg Ardry.
Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations are closed. All those in favor, election of Greg Ardry as Treasurer of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, I declare Greg Ardry as the Treasurer of the Board of Education. And that's it, right?
That's it for your organization.
Excellent.
That part.
Very good. Next, let's move on to the safety message.
Spring is finally here. Yay! The weather is warming up and the blossoms are blooming, and it's time for us all to start planting vegetable and flower gardens, new trees and bushes. Now, the thing is, if you are planting anything 12 inches or deeper, such as a new tree or bush, you need to call Digger's Hotline, which is 811. First, and you can contact them also online at www.diggershotline.com. The Digger's Hotline is a free statewide one-call center that alerts the appropriate utilities so their professionals can come out and mark the locations of any underground facilities on your property. It is state law because hitting a gas main might cause an explosion. This explosion might not only damage your own home and injure your own family, but also your neighbor's homes and family members. Hitting electrical wires might result in electric shocks or start fires. Puncturing water pipes might cause area flooding. So think first before going ahead and starting any digging on your property, you need to call 811. They mark the locations of your underground facilities, and then an 18-inch buffer zone must be maintained on each side of a marked facility, and mechanized equipment cannot be used within the buffer zone. Then it is safe to dig around the marked locations. Chairperson of the Public Services Commission, Summer Strand, reminds us, quote, "No matter the size of a project, a free call to 811 before digging can keep our communities safe and connected," unquote.
Let's move on. How about Presley Morgan from Craig High School?
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We have a lot of last going on this month. So we had our last blood drive for Student Council. We got a total of 53 products. We had over 20 new donors, which was really exciting for us, so hopefully the turnout next year is even better. FFA held a plant sale last week and this week. It was an interdependent collab with the Tech Ed, Art, and Special Education Department. It was the first year that they worked collaboratively with other sections of our school, so that was really exciting for them, and they claimed that it was an overwhelming success. Jazz trivia night was held the other week. There was live music, prizes, and as well a good turnout. We also had the eighth grade tours last week. We showed around the new eighth graders that are incoming to Craig, so they got to see the different areas of the school, how to walk around, and ask any questions that they're anxious about and get to learn about our school. Teacher Appreciation Week was also last week, so we did a lot for that. Science National Honor Society collected little bags full of candy chips, and then we sent out a whole bunch of cards to our 120 staff. We also have Daisy Day coming up, which is a dollar for a daisy, and then we send them out for our little May flowers. We had DECA ICDC success, and everything's finishing up with clubs, we're handing out cords, and then our National Honor Society handed out their last stools today. Coming up, we have the Senior Picnic and Grad Walk, which is happening May 29th. We have senior awards for scholarships on May 28th, and of course, graduation June 5th. This summer, they're holding a Spain trip. There was also a Women of Distinction Dinner that I attended and a few others from Craig High School were able to attend. And lastly, sports are preparing just to finish their tournaments and move on to sectionals, so we're excited to see who gets to advance on this date. I just wanted to say thank you guys all for this opportunity. I love being able to share what's going on and happening throughout our school. I am advancing to UW-Madison next year. I was a direct admit to the School of Business, so I'm going to study business analytics, get a certificate in Spanish. I will be dancing for a club there, and I plan to study abroad in Dublin. So once again, thank you, guys.
And from Parker High School, Kiara Sailing.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, my name is Kiara Sailing. Also, as you know, last week was our Teacher Appreciation Week, so I would just like to recognize one of my most impactful teachers that I've had, which is John Zimmerman. He got me involved into DECA and into our Business and Marketing Program, which has allowed me to advance my future career path, as well as advance in DECA, which I went to the district, state, and international level at. To start off, the Parker Computer Science Programming Teams competed at the Marquette University recently and had an outstanding day. With about 50 teams participating, we are proud that Parker had three teams finish in the top 10. Our fifth-place team included Russell Groh-Rudd, Evan Horing, Matt Stoto, and Elias Yuland. Two of our teams tied for fourth place, including Ryan Hahn, Ryder Razoo, Dalen Schilling, and Kenzie, Kenny Zunzina? Nearly 400 students attended the Parker Prom of 2025, which was Met Gala masquerade. Thank you to the advisors, Dejean Kirkland and Colin Swanson, for organizing the beautiful and fun evening for our students. These two planned prom while also simultaneously organizing Mary Poppins, which both did amazing. On Monday, May 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., Parker High School will be hosting its fourth annual student showcase. This year, there will be 65 presentations and projects from over 80 students representing 10 different clubs, organizations, and academic courses, which Anna Fallon and myself will also be presenting our DECA manual that we have been dedicated to the past six months on basics cooperative natural foods. We would like to extend the invitation to all of the members of the school board, and we hope you will attend this celebration of our students' work. Parker's avid 11 group raised $7,300 over the last two years, and due to this, they are able to visit UW-Clare and UW-Lacrosse for college visits on May 22nd and the 23rd. The group of juniors will also get to stay overnight in the dormitories to actually experience what college may be like for them. The AP Human Geography course ran this year after a few years of not running due to low enrollment. 16 out of the 19 students elected to take the AP exam last week and are feeling very confident about their scores, and Ms. Scardino is so proud of this group of students for working very hard this year. Parker bands directed by Mr. John Beaster will perform their annual spring band concert on Tuesday, May 20th, at 7:30 p.m. in the Parker Auditorium. The Concert Band, Symphony, why can't I say this word? Symphony Band and Win Ensemble will perform music from movies from spring with some whimsy as well. The Parker Marching Band will take part in the Memorial Day Parade, sponsored by the Janesville Patriotic Society, on Monday, May 26th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. Following the parade, they will take part in the Veterans Ceremony at Traxler Park. The band's final performance of the school year will be at the Parker commencement exercises on Friday, June 6th, at Monterey Stadium, along with the members of the orchestra, which is directed by Ms. Sarah Lindholm. These performances bring another busy year for the bands to a close, and we hope you can join us. The Vietnam veterans shared their wisdom and experiences with the U.S. History classes at Parker this last week. This was a year, this is a yearly tradition that students, teachers, and the veterans look forward to each year. Students were able to inquire about the veterans' experiences. Some of the questions that were asked and answered included, what was the weather and the environment like in Vietnam? What were some of the most difficult moments in Vietnam? What would you guys eat? Where would you sleep? All the things like that. Fantastic answers were provided to these questions, which provided great information about the history and how war impacted society. Additionally, one unique opportunity presented through the experience is that four students from each hour were selected to dress in the equipment that the veterans wore. Students dressed in uniform, wore helmets, carried radios, and even carried a disassembled M60 machine gun weighing 37 pounds. The gear itself for one student weighed 90 pounds. All kinds of different items were on display for students to see, touch, and ask questions. All weapons brought in were disassembled, no need to worry. With this unique opportunity, students can better understand the hardships and the challenges of being a soldier in the Vietnam War. As you may have heard, Parker recently hosted the Future Viking Day for the incoming ninth grade class. In addition to learning the ins and outs of the building and seeing all of the clubs and activities we offer, students spent a long time in the gym getting to know Parker's Link Crew. Link Crew leaders offered advice on things they've learned along the way and led them through activities to keep them laughing and promote working as a team. Thank you to Parker Link Crew for helping set a positive and welcoming tone to our future Vikings. Last week, Parker wrestlers spent time teaching physical education students basic wrestling skills. These skills could help aid in a moment of self-defense or give knowledge to any student considering going out for wrestling. Thank you to Junior Daniel Anderson for organizing this opportunity for our students and for presenting such great hands-on learning information. Additional thanks to all of the Parker wrestlers who volunteered their time in helping. This week, Parker FCC LA members shared their knowledge about food and nutrition to the kindergarten classes at Danbyron. Students developed an age-appropriate lesson plan and engaging activities using the facts about nutrition that they had learned in their culinary arts classes. They introduced to the kindergartners about my plate and taught them about healthy eating habits. These students did a great job and gained valuable experience to build as they took for, as they look forward to being teachers in the future. You can come learn more about this student-led activity and the other FCC LA projects at the Parker Student Showcase next Monday night, like previously mentioned. And our very own Parker student Jimmy Hodge was a keynote speaker at the Rotary Luncheon this week. He spoke about the book he recently wrote and published titled Tap, Tap, Tap: My Adventures with OCD. So I would like to thank you guys on behalf of both Cameron and I for allowing us to present to you guys of what Parker High School is doing. This year, or this next coming year, I will be going to UW-Whitewater to major in Entrepreneurship and minor in Marketing. So, thank you.
Before we get to citizen comments, I wanted to make sure that we welcome our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Johnson, welcome, and thank you and congratulations. And it'll be nice to get to know you through the year, and wish you all the best. And if you ever have any questions about anything, feel free to ask. We're here to help each other succeed, so welcome. And, okay. Citizen comments, so I have one so far. Rebecca Schenzel. Hi Rebecca, if you could just give us your name and address, and remind you, you have about three minutes.
Okay, sounds good. Rebecca Schenzel, 4215 Saratoga Drive. I'm here tonight without my other half, as he is taking our son to basketball. So, good evening, Board of Education Administration. I am here tonight to voice my concern of inequitable benefits for married employees within the School District of Janesville. The School District of Janesville has over 45 married couples currently employed by the district. In 2022, the district adopted the Family Advantage Health Plan, the FAHP, for employees. However, married couples in the district are not able to participate in this plan. Therefore, there is zero compensation for School District of Janesville couples, which is not equitable to the married couples. Many of the married couples within the School District of Janesville have numerous years of service to the school district and are very connected to the Janesville community. Addressing the health insurance concerns would follow the goal of attracting and retaining dedicated staff. In addition, it would provide fairness and equity to all staff members. I welcome the opportunity to explore options for equitable staff compensation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Consider approval of the Consent Agenda. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that passes unanimously, six to zero. Next item, 5.1. Discussion and Restructure of the Board of Education Committees and Appointment of Committee Members. So did everybody get to see the memo? So we all know what committees we're on? Correct? And what responsibilities we may have related to that? Everybody shaking their head, yeah, we saw that? The only one addition at this time I'd like to mention is Commissioner Susan Johnson and Lisa Herta have agreed to accompany me on the negotiating team. So the three of us will be on the negotiating team whenever that might start or happen. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a more of a comment at this point, and it's only because we've had the committees, the way, the structure for, I'd have to look back the last time we made a change. And that, I'm not suggesting we change, just to make sure that the work of the district for us as a board member, that the committee's structure is what we would like it to be. If there are anything, any tweaks or any things that we would like to consider, I guess that is something I would say we should explore a bit, and so, and I'll say, so what came, what came to mind is when we're looking at particular fiscal responsibilities, and we're talking about in Personnel Policy Curriculum Committee, that's really out of place. So if we're, you know, and the healthcare piece was a part of that. And so to get our hands around all of the financial piece, it's like, well, maybe that discussion should reside there. But then, as I said, well, if that resides there, then I know there are policies specifically in the financial area, but really, is that the best place for it? So I'm like, well, maybe this is a bigger conversation to say, what should our committee structure be? I think it is perfectly fine to continue with what we have at this point, but at some point, I would suggest that maybe we explore, here's what, the parts and pieces, and along with Superintendent Holsman, and I'd say to the rest of the cabinet to say, what makes the most sense? And if what we have today still makes the most sense, then great. Thank you.
Excellent comment. Anyone else want to respond to that? I agree with Greg, we'll be picking this up. My thought was too, if we're starting that discussion about changing our health plan, it might be best to have that Benefits Committee, and we can talk about this in the future, maybe stand on its own temporarily as well. But we'll, I think we need to have that discussion. 5.2. Thanks again. Consider approval of the 25-26 Board of Education meeting schedule. That's also, was a memo in your That's also, was a memo in your documents. Denise did bring up to me that we have, we can eliminate a meeting. No, it's the opposite. We cannot eliminate a meeting without full board approval, but we can add one without full board approval, because you never know what might come up. There could be an emergency decision to be made. So, that is a fluid document, but anybody have anything else to add or discuss about that schedule? If not, I could use a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the 25-26 Board of Education Meeting Schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously, six to zero. Next up, Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee Meeting.
Nope.
That's what I meant to say. Next, 5.3, Update on Long Range Facilities Plan. Next steps.
Thank you. Just want to keep this on the front of our mind. If you drive by either Franklin or Washington, you'll see large areas of roofing equipment and supplies that are being prepared. Franklin already is starting that work, and Washington will start real soon. That's part of our referendum practice that we have moving forward. Both Parker and Craig are working on their safety systems. So, again, those safety systems, life safety systems includes bells, paging, the security systems that they have. Some of that is part of the 2020 referendum that we're finalizing in our safety procedures, but that activity will be moving forward this summer and throughout the beginning of the school year. So, as we provide updates and upgrades, those are the four projects that are going on for the most part right now. And we hear, we heard last time from EUA and JP calling about all the things that are going on behind the scenes as we prepare for a groundbreaking slash beginning of the work for the $151 million referendum in May of 2026. So, just want to make sure that we take a moment to recognize the work that we're doing, what's happening, and if you drive by those schools, you'll see some of that work getting done right now. So, kudos to Dan and his team for organizing those things behind the scene, and Dave Leader for working with the building principals to make sure we're not disrupting the learning environment. That's something that's happening right now.
Thank you. Anyone else comment or question? All right, let's move on to the Personnel Policy and Curriculum Committee Report Agenda Item.
All right, I'm speaking in Liz Paul's absence. The May PPC meeting was held last week on May 5th. The first subject on the agenda was an overview of the new ninth-grade conferencing program that launched this year at Craig and Parker. A team of educators met to review our work-based learning programs and better support academic and career planning earlier at the high school level. A plan was created to introduce ninth graders and families to options within the district. Training was implemented for staff members who were to be meeting with ninth-grade families for scheduled time periods during fall conferences. The goal was to meet one-on-one with ninth-grade families and begin academic and career planning or career pathway planning. Students also took a Career Matchmaker Survey in their English class to support these efforts. The focus at conferences was on improving awareness and education on graduation requirements. Survey results were very favorable, with positive feedback from families who participated, and the high school teams are making plans for expanding this program for next year in order to reach even more families and provide more information to them. Next, at PPC Committee, we learned about the new messaging platform that will be launched next year for improving communication between teachers, coaches, students, and families. The platform is called Talking Points, which can be used as either an app or via a web browser and acts as a texting tool. And one of the cool things that we learned is that it can be transcribed into 150-plus languages. It is also already used in many districts throughout Wisconsin, as well as around the nation, including some of the largest districts. Teachers can message one-on-one or to the whole class or their club for announcements. Please note that this will not necessarily take place of other options that are already in place within the district, like Class Dojo, that's already being used in some of our elementary schools. More information will roll out to the district as this is launched district-wide. We also listened to a thorough presentation on the AIM training, which is being used in conjunction with the ACT 20 Reading Initiative in the state of Wisconsin. AIM is the literacy platform that the District of Janesville chose to use for improved literacy training for our K-5 teachers. It is very comprehensive training and follows best practices with a focus on skilled reading. The training for teachers was 60 hours of professional development. It was self-paced, and it was also district-funded. As the training, as of the training date, 99% of our K-5 teachers, including EL and special education teachers, have received training thus far. All elementary principals have also completed the Pathway to Literacy Leadership training that is geared to the administrators. So, not only are our elementary teachers trained in skilled literacy, so are our principals. This was 45 hours of self-paced training. Also, we wanted to note that some of our administrators have done both the teacher and leadership training. There is a pre-assessment as well as a post-assessment, and in order to pass the training, individuals had to score 70% or higher. We are very happy to hear that our district average has been about 94%, which is really great to see. Through the process, the district was able to discover areas of lower proficiency, which we now can work on for district professional development. Fluency, sentence structure, and orthography are three areas that the district is working on as a result of this training and assessment. A lot of effort and time has gone into this training by our teachers and administration in order to support stronger literacy skills here in the Janesville School District. So, many thanks to all who have been a part of that big lift and all of that training. There was also a lot of Neola policies that PPC reviewed and were voted on in tonight's Consent Agenda at this district board that we approved at PPC to move forward to tonight's Consent Agenda. Our next PPC meeting will be held on Monday, June 2nd, at 4:30 here at the ESC.
Thanks, Lisa. Any comments or questions for Lisa? How about some future meetings? Gretchen?
Okay, your Finance Buildings and Grounds Meeting will be May 20th at 3:00 p.m. at the ESC, at the Educational Services Center. The Personnel Policy and Curriculum Meeting will be June 2nd at 4:30 p.m. at the Educational Services Center, and the next Board of Education Meeting will be June 10th at 6:00 p.m. at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you. And June 10th will be Denise's last official Board of Education Meeting.
Unless she runs for the board.
Unless she runs for the board.
She laughs heartily. She laughs heartily.
That's an interesting idea. I like that.